Okay, my digital device shows it is the six o'clock hour. Staff ready? I'd like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 15, 2019, to order. If you'd all be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's nice to see a full house this evening. Can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Friend.
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Here.
Member Juva.
Here.
Member List.
Here.
Member Rains.
Fantastic. First item on the agenda is the consent calendar. The Chair would like to pull item 1.3. Could I have adoption for items 1.1 and 1.2?
Move to adopt consent calendar items 1.1 and 1.2.
Second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposition, hearing none. Item two then, I pulled from the consent calendar, first of all, the Chair has absolutely no objection to the item. I pulled it simply for the benefit of some members who are new and may not have been here before, and I didn't know if staff wanted to just give a brief overview as to what this is. If no Commissioner feels that that's necessary, then I would entertain a motion for adoption. I just thought it's been on, this has been an issue that we've been approving periodically.
And I read the history of that.
Okay.
And I even drove by and looked at them.
And use your microphone, Commissioner. Push the little button that way, so it's recorded for...
Bring it down some.
And then bring it down a little bit.
I appreciate your consideration of the new member to the planning council, but I did drive by Marshall and look at these facilities, and I did read the history, so I have no issue with adopting this.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt. Approve, I think, actually, is the motion. Receive and file, technically.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Great, thank you. Moving on then to item three. Items of interest to the public comment for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to approach the commission and bring any issue that they think is relevant to the commission. Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Just one positive thing going forward in this year, if the city of Placerville can really buckle down and work on its fire safety planning. Paradise had great planning, and they still got wiped out. Things that really concern me is that Highway 50 becoming instantly a parking lot, and everyone's locked in place. So, you gotta fight Caltrans or work with them, but anything you can do to try and figure out a better plan. It's always been in the general plan to have peripheral roads. You know, big, not big roads, but roads that encircle the city, allowing other ways of escape and egress. Right now, we're kind of landlocked in our little valley. But another item, I've been so busy, I never really got to come ask about it, was how did the pizza banet sign on the US-50 rear side of the building get approved? It just showed up one day, and I never recalled it coming to this planning commission, so I just wondered why. I always thought an exterior sign of a neon type within 300 feet of historical resources and districts should have come to the planning commission for review, so if somebody could just set me straight on that. Just some things to consider is that it's located within the designated California scenic highway corridor with specific requirements. I do find it a distraction, especially in winter when the leaves are off the trees. It seems to be the only one that really stands out like that, and that's precedent-setting other people are gonna start to want. We're just gonna clutter our historic highway. Does it meet Placerville sign ordinances? And just, those are some questions I had, so if somebody could clarify that for me, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? All right, seeing none, I will close... Hitting the wrong buttons. I'll close item three and move on to public hearing. We have one item this evening. 884 Spring Street, a variance 18-03. This is a request to allow a seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, number one. Number two, to allow a 15-foot, 15 feet setback where 20 feet is required under the R-16,000 zone. And who has the staff report? Andrew, you got the staff?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight's request is, the applicants are Todd and Amy Sprague. They own and live in a multi-storyed home located at 884 Spring Street. The home's parcel is slightly less than a third of an acre. The parcel slope is approximately 30 percent, which slopes from the southeast to the northwest towards Spring Street. The existing zoning for the site and those parcels along the same side of Spring Street as the Sprague home is owned R-16,000, or a single-family residential 6,000-square-foot minimum parcel size. The Spragues would like to replace their existing front deck, widen the deck along the side of the home, five feet into the 20-foot rear yard setback, and add a new deck along the rear of the home extending two-and-a-half feet into the 10-foot side yard setback. The deck additions would allow greater enjoyment of their steep property. Attachment A contains the Sprague's detailed submittal information, including a thorough description of the request, photos of the site, site plan exhibits, and a letter of support from Aaron Riviero, who lives adjacent to the property along Cottage Street. Ms. Riviero is the owner of the property located at 855 Cottage. And Attachment B of staff's report shows the location of her home in relationship to the project site. The commission's authority under City Code for variance requests relies within Sections 1031 and 1035 of City Code, and the commission is required to act upon all variance requests. To approve any variance request, the planning commission must make findings. Number one, that the granting of the request would not constitute a special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity. The granting will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. And number three, the granting of the variance would not injure property or improvements in the vicinity of the site. Based upon information provided in the public record, including the 30 percent parcel slope condition, the multi-storyed developed nature of the site, the numerous existing residents shown in Attachment B of staff's report that are located within the project vicinity that have non-conforming setbacks, and the letter of support from a neighbor most affected by this request. Staff believes the commission can make the findings prepared to justify the granting of the variance. These findings include that the variance request qualifies for the categorical exemption under Section 15303A of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Staff recommends the condition take the action laid out on Pages four and five of staff's report, and to make the findings, and then conditionally approve the variance request. The Spragues are in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Andrew. Before I continue, just for the record, the Chair would acknowledge that the Spragues are friends of mine, and I have talked to them about this project. I've had an opportunity to review it, so... Any questions of staff by commissioners?
No questions. I have... I have questions of the staff and/or the Spragues.
Will you make a decision, because if you want to direct your questions to staff, now is your opportunity.
I think I'll address it to the Spragues.
All right. Hold on, not yet, not yet. Anyone else have questions of staff?
I actually have one question, Andrew. On page two of your staff report, in the second paragraph, you use, you say, the city planner, this is back in 1983 or prior to '83.
Yep.
The city planner granted minor deviation 18, 1983-02.
Yes.
How does a minor deviation, since it's capitalized and it's got a number, I assume it's a process, how does that differ from a variance? What's the distinction?
It's a form of variance. In this, yeah, in this case, back then, I don't know what the statute or the City Code stated.
Okay.
But we clearly have evidence that the director, excuse me, the city planner at the time did take into consideration a request to minimize that front yard due to the fact of slope and its proximity to the street, so they granted that.
Sure. In today's vernacular, it would be a variance then? But it wouldn't have to, it was administrative. I'm taking it was administrative.
It was administrative. We do have a, the term minor deviation in our code today. Today's minor deviation, if requested, would, we would, let's see, administratively, we would not be able to permit a minor deviation of that size today.
Ah, gotcha.
Yeah.
The front setback.
The front setback, yeah.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
And in this particular case, it was an averaging. That was the determination by the city planner at the time to take the average setback of existing improvements along Spring Street on the same side of the street.
Okay, that's interesting to know. Thank you. Commissioner, I mean Director Rivas?
Yeah, just one quick station, one statement to that, follow-up, and Andrew can jump in if I misspeak. My understanding that staff has the ability to do administrative variance or minor deviation of up to 10 percent.
Oh.
Greater than that, it would be a variance and would come to the planning commission.
Okay.
In this case, this would have been a 50 percent deviation, which would have triggered a variance.
Okay. I think that could be of value for us to know at some point, and not meaning to prolong the discussion. Commissioner List?
Just one quick question. I noticed on page one, it says fee parcel number. Is that the same as the assessor's parcel number?
Yeah, the assessor has changed that nomenclature, so, here we go. I thought it'd start off here, yeah.
Fee parcel is now the new vernacular?
When it relates to the parcel configured, it's shown on an assessor's map, they now want it called, or they're going to call it, a fee parcel.
Hmm, okay. Interesting. All right. This is, any other questions of staff by commissioners?
All right, this is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for the applicant to describe their project, and...
Do I ask after the question?
Generally, the protocol would be they would speak first.
I'm learning, be patient with me, thanks.
My first time doing it.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for agreeing to see us, and thank you to you guys for the work you've done on your findings, and also thank you for your recommendation. I guess I don't have a whole lot to, I think we laid it out fairly well in our application with a lot of detail, and why we want it, what we want to do. We've already got a permit on file with the city. We determined that a couple of the footings were actually not infringing on the setbacks, so I managed to get stairs on the house a couple weeks ago, which is nice to be able to get to our front door again. But I guess at that point, I just, I urge your approval and ask if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Rains, I know that you probably have a question or two.
I have three.
Okay.
And I did see your property. I went over to the old EDD building and parked in their parking lot, because they're raised, so I can see it.
Yeah.
And you do have a small landmass, so I compliment you on wanting to spend the time and the money and the energy to enhance your property.
Yeah.
I think that the new decking on the south side will be great. I'm a little concerned about the extension. Are you going to put new boards on the extension and keep the old boards that are there, or are you going to replace all the boards so that they age at the same time?
Planning to redeck the entire thing, because honestly, there's different decking on different parts, as whoever built these decks put different things on there, and the railings are different all the way around, so the, I don't know if you can, I can just about see the picture I have up there, but, so the parts that are in pink on that picture are the new parts, and there's a narrow strip along...
Oh.
When we talk about the front of the house, it actually points parallel to the front of the property.
Right.
So, that strip along the side is a two-foot widening of the side deck, and the one in the back, is that the one you're talking about? The larger deck in the back?
I guess my question was basically, are you just gonna replace all the decking with new wood so that it ages at the same time?
Yeah, it's all gonna, it's all tracks.
And that was my only minor, that was my main concern.
Yeah.
And then, when you look at...
We had to replace a beam in the process, too.
When you look at B, and you look clear at the far end where you say your new stairs are, you're gonna put a guardrail up, because right now, your stairs don't really have one.
Right. That's why they have a caution tape around them at the moment, because they're not done.
Got it.
They haven't had their final inspection yet.
That's question number two.
Okay.
Now, question three. If you look at item A, the guard, you're gonna replace the guardrails then?
Yes.
Because the old guardrails, cats and dogs, cats and dogs and kids can slip through those.
Right, they're not code. I have three new sections of railing that are, I don't know when you went, but I have three new sections of railing that are up now, and you can see what the new railing's gonna look like all the way around, and it's to code.
Excellent. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant? Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to address this project before the commission? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. The only observation that the Chair would make is that this property, to me, seems quintessential Placerville in terms of the irregularity of lots and the challenges that a lot of folks face in terms of putting structures in, and there was a, appreciate the additional exhibit that was provided that showed the variance, I think it was the very last one, non-conforming setbacks in the same area, which I think makes it very easy, at least for this commissioner, to come to a finding that this is not creating a special privilege, and it's quite consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. As a matter of fact, I would say, if they don't have it, then they don't belong in the neighborhood, so it'd be appropriate to grant it. But in any event, the Chair is interested in a motion, if it's appropriate. Commissioner List?
I move that we approve variance 18-3, subject to the conditions and requirements on Pages four and five.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Keeney, seconds. Any discussion on the motion?
The only discussion I've got is to essentially agree with what you said. I want to thank the Spragues for bringing to us, first, coming before you actually take action on your project. We've had many projects that we had to consider after the fact, and it's very frustrating. And some of those projects aren't as clear that we would not be granting the special privilege as we, is this the case here? As our Chair pointed out, your property is typical of Placerville, and that last example of all the other properties that also have had variances granted, just kind of underscores the need to do this. And so, I want to thank you for your assistance, making it easy for us to consider your project. And so, with, that's the only discussion that I've got.
We have a motion, a second, discussion?
I wonder if Member List would entertain a friendly amendment to adopt the staff report as part of the public record as well?
Go ahead and explain yourself.
The staff is recommending that we, number one, adopt the staff report as part of the public record. Two, make the findings as outlined, and three, approve the variance.
But the, it's in, it's in this section, right? Oh, that's fine.
Technical matter. I don't know, Andrew's kind of busted me on that before.
Second or the motion accepts the friendly amendment, I presume?
Yes.
All right. Any additional discussion? I think we can do this by consent. All in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, the motion is approved. Just a technical detail, should somebody choose to appeal it, they have five or 10, 10 business days.
10 calendar days.
10 calendar days to appeal it, probably unlikely. Thank you, and thank you for the quality of the exhibit, made the job much easier to do.
Did a good job.
All right, moving on to then item five, matters from Commissioner and Commissioners and staff. Do any of the Commissioners have an item they'd like to bring up for staff? Commissioner Juva?
I'd like to raise to staff the issue of the sign that was raised during the public comment period, if staff could look into that.
Yes, thank you. I was actually gonna ask the same thing. I would like that to be agendized for discussion at a future meeting. I actually share some of the concerns that were brought out, and I don't recall when I first saw the sign pop up, but it did strike me particularly since the gas station, the Shell Station at the corner, we voted no, I don't know if I did, but it, they came forth with digital signage for the fuel prices, and that was voted down, and one of the reasons for voting it down was the digital lighting in the scenic highway, scenic corridor, and I think, for no other reason to be consistent. In any event, if you could be so kind, Pierre, as to bring a staff report back that we can then address.
We can certainly do that, but just for the record, and for the member of the public, our doors are always open. You can always call us and make an appointment, and we can review the file, and we can attempt to explain the rationale between whatever decision staff had made, because the open forum really, it's not a question-and-answer forum, and it's not really the place to cause additional work on staff. We're extremely busy right now. We're more than happy to do that, but just for the record, I want to explain that typical protocol is, you know, the person should come to us, and if the applicant, or actually the person that has interest in a particular decision that was made by staff, if you're not satisfied, then certainly you can come to the commission, and you can tell them, well, I spoke with staff, wasn't happy with how they made the particular decision, and then, then the commission can tell us to agendize the matter. But we can certainly bring it to you at a future item.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And the commission is sensitive to the staff's workload as well, which I hope is a good thing for us. Anyone else have questions? Or, okay, then it would be on to you, 5.2, matters from staff?
I know the Director's gonna have some comments here regarding recent activity, planning activity in front of the City Council. I want to let you know that we do, we will not have an agendized meeting for the first meeting in February. The second meeting, still up in the air at this moment. Director Rivas, do you have some updates?
Yes, I have a couple of updates. The first one, we haven't probably spoken about in quite a while, is the proposed Hampton Inn and Suites Hotel proposed in Smith Flat. Just to let you know that, it's probably been about a month now that I did speak with the architect that's under contract for the property. He did, he did reach out to me and had, wanted to know some questions regarding what building codes that would be applicable to the project, based on what was originally submitted, we're under 2013 building codes, but if they resubmit, they're gonna be under 2016 building codes. And so, he explained to me that they're still trying to make a decision whether or not they're gonna move forward with Hampton Inn and Suites versus the Holiday Inn Express. I haven't heard anything. I've been contemplating just reaching out to him and seeing where they are on that. We're all keeping our fingers crossed that the project will move forward, but again, I get nervous when, I haven't heard anything now in probably about a month, but I just wanted to just let you know that's where we're at, and I'll reach out to them and see if I can get some more current information on the progress of that hotel project.
Okay, thank you.
But we are going to build something someday.
I don't know about "we."
Well, I hope so. That's up to the property owner, you know, to move forward on. I get kind of nervous when I'm hearing, we're in, you know, are we in a bear market? Is this, you know, some minor recession looming in the future? Is that factoring into their decision-making? I don't, I don't know exactly what it is, but unfortunately, I think the longer the project stretches out, the more expensive it becomes, because construction costs do continue to rise.
And then, my second question is, my property touches that property, do I have to recuse myself from any discussion on that property?
No, you would have to recuse yourself of any decision-making on the property, so we do have, it is an entitled project, so this is just to update the planning commission. You don't have to recuse yourself during any reports or asking staff of questions in regards to the reports.
Thank you.
Appreciate the disclosure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, the next item, and again, Mr. List, you don't have to recuse yourself, just want to update the planning commission on our cannabis business overlay zone. As you recall, back in December, you did forward a recommendation to approve both text amendments and the zoning map exhibits for the City Council to consider. They did consider those at their January 8 meeting, and that was when they actually introduced the ordinance, and they waived the first reading. And so, they did approve, what the planning commission approved with some revisions to the map. So, the text remains as it was recommended by the planning commission. There was considerable debate. The most concerned area was north of Perro's Road in Cold Springs, and so, what the Council directed staff to do is, we're gonna come back to them, they'll review the new map on January the 22. Staff deleted all those parcels lying north of Perro's Road and north of Cold Springs. So, all the parcels lying south or north of Placerville Drive remain, and per direction to Council. We also removed two county-owned parcels, and that's the parcels along Placerville Drive that contain both the County Museum and the Veterans Hall, so those parcels were also removed. And the Council added one parcel, and that's 1144 Broadway Court, which is located there at the corner of Broadway Court and Main Street. That's an old historic stone building. The Council did ask that that be included in the cannabis overlay.
That's right by the Sportsman's, right across the alley there from the...
Right across the street from the Mosquito Outfitters.
Mosquito Outfitters, yeah.
Or right behind Main Street Auto. So, that was added in.
The old DeVitos, the old DeVitos Building, that was a cigar shop until recently, is it included? There was an issue with it being too close to the school, I think, on the way backside.
Yes, it's too close to the school, and I think we brought that to the attention of the planning commission, and we also brought it to the attention of Council, and we had some exhibits where we created a map that showed the 250-foot setback from the property boundary, from the school property, that Sierra School. And we also created a different map that basically provided a 250-foot setback from the effective uses on the property, meaning the buildings and the playgrounds and such. And so, it was able to take the properties on the north side out of the 250-foot setback, but the properties on the south were still in. So, what the Council did is, they left the properties on the north side are shown with the cannabis overlay. However, when they, if somebody were to propose a cannabis business in any of those parcels located on the north side of Main Street, they're gonna have to go through a variance process, because they're within the 250-foot setback from the property lines.
Oh, okay.
Now, we think the findings would be there, the granite, but that will come before this commission.
And there's a total, there's a maximum of three within the entire city they're allowed, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The Council through resolution, did pass a resolution basically eliminating the number of cannabis business retail to three, or, and three labs, laboratories for certification.
Okay, so a total of six businesses in the industry?
Correct.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And... And just a update on the Clay Street EIR. We just recently received some additional cultural resource studies from the consultants, so we're gonna be incorporating that additional information into the EIR, and we're hoping that we'll have a then final EIR that we'll be able to make available to the public, and we'll agendize it at the Council sometime, hopefully later in February. Long awaited.
Terrific.
So...
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that's all I have. Thank you very much.
I see Commissioner Rains has a question or a comment?
I just have a question. Are the labs going to be separate from the stores, or are they gonna be together? So, are we talking about three stores with the lab inside, or are we talking about store, 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 lab, lab, lab?
I think it's the latter. A total of six businesses.
Total of six businesses, but only three of those can be actual dispensaries or the retail, which can have a number of different businesses in them, but none of those can also be a lab. To be a certified lab, you're only a laboratory, and basically, it's in accordance with regulations that have been promulgated to the state of California. There's a whole department that's been created to review that.
Can both licenses or permits be at the same location, or they have to be separate?
It would be separate locations.
They have to be separate locations?
They're separate businesses, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, certified lab would only be doing certification of the product.
She can't have like a winery and a brewery in the same building.
So, we're actually looking for six plots of land in the six miles of the city of Placerville?
Well, if you recall, the overlay zones that we created, which looked at a reduced area that we're... that were essentially either zone commercial or highway commercial, there's quite a number of parcels that are contained within those, within the map. So, hopefully, we have enough area, and I know Mr. Zuba brought that up as far as want to maintain more of a free market and not constrain it such that we're not gonna have anybody coming in and be able to locate anywhere.
Anything else, Pierre?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anything else from commissioners? The staff would entertain, or the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn? Thank you, and good night.